Okay, it's four thirty, so we'll call the meeting to order. We'll stand for the flag salute. Looks like everyone's here. Hi Eddie, I haven't said hi to you.
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Uh, we are starting out with our district highlight and our district highlight tonight is a presentation by Indy Helms and she is our, what would you say, our, our retiring, uh, senior emeritus, that's a good way to put it, um, student representative on the board and we've already, of course, heard from Elise Ozanich. Um, and so we're excited to hear and to see Indy this evening. Indy, I'm, I think we're ready when you are.
Did I stand back yet? Okay. Okay, I'll start here, maybe I'll move around, we'll see. Okay, so, hi guys, uh, my name is Indiana Helms and, uh, I'm excited to share with you tonight, my final school board representative project, so it's been a great two years. Um, I hope you'll remember last year I did a project, uh, about, I did a really extensive research project where I interviewed students from all over the school district ages K through twelve. And, um, unfortunately, I did not have time to pursue something as, um, in-depth as that this year, but I thought I would share with you kind of my reflections and my thoughts about my time, um, both in the Seala School District and as a student representative on the board, so. Okay, so a quick roadmap of, um, what I'm going to share with you today. I'll start out with my personal experience in the Seala School District and kind of my journey. And then, uh, again, my journey with the Seala School Board and a little bit beyond that as well. And then lastly, I want to spend some time reflecting and visit some highs, lows, and a little bit of gratitude. Okay, so I have spent thirteen years in the Seala School District. I started out as a little kindergartner at Robert Lynn Elementary. I did half-days. Uh, that picture on the far left is me and my friend Macy. That was kindergarten graduation. I'm wearing a little hat. Uh, and I think back then, uh, my biggest worries were having a decent standing on the clip chart and, um, passing my reading quizzes. I kind of wish that life was that simple again and that my outfits were as good as they were back then. But that's okay, I'm still having a great time and I think it's fun to look back and we look so little, that's so great. Um, and then the second picture, the one in the middle, is me in fifth grade on our, uh, trip to the Woodland Park Zoo. Fifth grade was, I think, my favorite year of school. I had a class that was really like closely knit and so it was fun to, I felt really connected to them and I feel like that helped me grow into my personality and get a little bit more confidence and this is at the end of the year. And so, um, yeah, I really loved fifth grade. And then lastly, this is from a few months ago at my high school graduation. It's me and my friend Hannah. And, um, I didn't think I was gonna cry and then I did after we threw our hats and I hugged my friend and I was kind of sad about it. Um, but I think our graduation, uh, was, it was a great celebration and a reminder of all that we've accomplished together, but it was also definitely bittersweet because it was kind of a, this is the last time we'll ever, you know, be together in the same room and so that made me pretty emotional, but I feel lucky to have spent it with the people that, uh, surrounded me, so, yeah. Oh, oh, no. I think that's. Oh, okay. Uh, my key takeaways from my time in the Seala School District. Uh, the first one is my voice was always valued and I think that this might be the truest and most powerful one because never, I don't, I can't remember a single moment that I spent in school where I felt like my voice was unwelcome or that uh, no one wanted to hear what I had to say. I'll share a little bit of an anecdote with you. When I was at SIS, a few friends and I wanted to start a school newspaper and so we presented this idea to the school administration. They were like, oh my gosh, this is so great. And so we made a little like Google Docs template and we wrote stories every month of what we thought, or not what we thought, what was going on in the school. And we had a little like voting box in the library where students could vote for their teacher of the month and that teacher was recognized in the letter or the newspaper, I guess. And so, um, I felt like the staff was always really excited and willing to help us out with that and that was really the first moment where I was like, these people want to hear what I have to say and they care about me and care about my voice and, um, so yeah, that's a very fond memory for me. And then secondly, I think that opportunities here, there, there are so many, they're everywhere and I think sometimes we, we live in a small town and we're like, we lack some opportunities that maybe the bigger schools around us have, but I think that, um, we do have them and they just, um, we're always creating new ones also, you guys and the board and the schools and, um, they do a very good job of that and so I felt like there was always a place for me and that there were other opportunities that I could explore if I wanted to. And then lastly, I think that growth is important, or the school, I had the experience that growth was important, but so is recognition, especially as I moved on to the high school. Um, I think we spent a lot of time talking about how we've grown and changed, but it's also important to look back and say, hey, this was a hard thing that we made it through and that's okay, but sometimes we just want to focus on getting better and getting better and getting better, but it's okay to slow down and look back. And I think especially at the high school, they do a really good job of saying, you know, I'm proud of you and you've done a really good job and I always felt like supported in that way and recognized that I was doing a good job, even if it wasn't a hundred percent all the time and my best was seventy-five percent, that was okay. So my leadership journey, uh, it's kind of a long one, but I started, um, the very first big leadership role I had was I was student body president when I was in eighth grade at the middle school. And I think this was kind of my biggest accidental blessing ever, I think. Um, I wanted to be a web mentor at the middle school, but I ended up not getting chosen to be a web mentor and I was kind of sad about that, but then I was like, you know what? I'm just gonna run for student council and so I did. And then I ended up as student body president, um, but and it was kind of, it wasn't fully, I, I don't know, that wasn't my first intention, that wasn't my vision, but I think that I connected with the greater student body and, um, uh, staff and people around the school so much better that I, uh, as in that role than I would have as a web mentor. And I think I also became really confident in my ability to bring people together. I think that, uh, that's something, that's a skill of mine that I really value and I think that it really started here when I was um, in a group. We had nine student council members in middle school and, um, it was, I felt like as kind of the president, I had a responsibility to like guide them and to bring us together so we could bring the school together and I felt really successful and proud of, um, what I did with that. And then after that, I didn't pursue a lot of leadership-related activities. My freshman and sophomore year, I think COVID kind of took a hit on my confidence and my social skills a little bit, so I definitely kind of took some time off and, um, but then at the end of my sophomore year, I had kind of a surprise scholarship to attend this leadership camp, uh, at Eastern Washington University called Mission Peak. And, uh, normally at Mission Peak, you would go with your school, your school funds you and sponsors you to go and you spend time with the students and you come up with ideas to better your school, but I was there all by myself. I didn't know anybody. That was kind of scary, um, but I ended up in a group with a lot of really wonderful people and I was able to get some of that confidence back that I'd missed. And then USSYP, that's a long acronym, but you guys are no stranger to those. So that is the United States Senate Youth Program and, uh, at this camp, you have the opportunity to apply for this, it's a scholarship program. And, um, your application can get chosen and you will be interviewed while you're at camp. And so my application was chosen and I got to interview and I'd kind of like hyped myself up about it and I was like, oh my gosh, I really want to do this, like this sounds so cool and then I didn't get it. And I was kind of like, oh, like, I, I feel like I sometimes I'm a stranger to, or not a stranger, sorry, words are hard today, but I I was sad that I didn't get it and I think I was expecting to and that was kind of a hard uh, hit for me, I guess, to my confidence. And, um, after that, a few months later, I applied to be, um, a part of the Washington State Board of Education. They have kind of just like here, a student board rep. Uh, those board reps get a vote though, which is pretty cool. And so, um, I applied for that and I ended up being a finalist, so I interviewed for that. Um, and then I didn't get it and I was kind of like, oh, this is, that's two in a row now and I felt like, I felt a little bit defeated. I was like, what, why, what am I doing wrong a little bit, you know? So I spent a few months, um, the summertime, I just kind of rolled through the summer and then this opportunity came around for me to apply to be, um, on the Seala School Board. And this was a period, uh, I think that I'd felt a little bit, I was a little bit feeling low and I hadn't gotten these two opportunities that I was really looking forward to. Um, but you know, you guys took a chance on me even when I was kind of at this low point and I think that you, um, bringing that confidence back to me really changed a lot for me and from here after I got this position, it was really just upward growth and so, uh, I, I'll say a lot of thank yous, but the first thank you is that for taking a chance on me, especially when I was having feelings that I was like not good enough and not worthy of these positions, so. Okay, so this opportunity, being a student representative on the Seala School Board was I, what I would define a major turning point in my life and in my goals. Um, I vividly, I'll share, I, I vividly remember the first meeting that I came here and I was sitting in this corner over here and there were four of us and like every five minutes, Mr. McKay was coming over to like tell us what was going on. So I was just lost. I was like, what are these acronyms? What are they saying? And it was like every five seconds he'd come over and whisper in our ear what was going on and then he'd roll back and then anyway, uh, it was just funny. And then I remember you asked us to speak, of course, and I was like sitting there and my hands were like shaking. And I don't really have, I don't really get a lot of stage fright, but I think I was just kind of, I don't know, the adrenaline and the nerves, but it's funny to like be up here talking to you guys, giving a presentation. I can see myself sitting right there in Derek's spot, like shaking. But, um, these are three big takeaways I've had from this position is that I feel really just surrounded by support in this room. Um, and if, like, after that first meeting, I know I was nervous, but I have never felt unimportant or like not listened to and I have always, always, always felt safe in this room and that I have a voice and you, um, you encourage me to share my own opinion, even if that's an opinion you don't share or that no one else in the room shares. That's my voice and I'm here to share that. And I always felt like that was really pushed on us and I really appreciate that so much. And then also never being afraid to ask questions. I'm a big question asker and I've asked a lot of questions over my two years here. Um, and you guys always answer with a smile and make sure that I fully understand. And I, I'll talk about this a little more later, but that really set the foundation for me having the confidence to ask those kinds of questions and that really helped me out later. Um, and then I came here and I wanted to learn. I wanted to learn what was going on outside of the classroom and I, I think I really accomplished that, both with this combination of being surrounded by support and asking questions, so I learned a lot, definitely. Okay, my proudest moments on the board, I would say were my first one of these, my first student rep presentation, uh, where I went out and I interviewed, uh, dozens of students from across the district, all kindergartners all the way through seniors in high school, eighteen, nineteen years old, and that really gave me such a new like perspective on the people who live here and like, I don't know, just the voices that people shared, even those little, little kids were so much fun. And, um, I was able to connect with students, connect with staff, connect with the community, um, members and lastly, this was just a really big passion project for me. I was asking them, uh, the questions I asked were like, what do you love most about your school? And if you could change one thing about your school, what would it be? And that's a topic that really means a lot to me. I want to make sure school is a place that people can find things that they love in and, um, I love sharing that with you and getting to hear what they thought and felt. Uh, so yeah. And then secondly, the Seala High School Student Panel that we did, I think that was last fall. Time moves so fast. Um, but I, as soon as I sat down in those chairs, uh, to facilitate that panel, I knew I was going to be part of something big and I knew that that was something, something that was important and that would change things. And I think it really did. And so I feel really lucky to be part of that and to have listened to those students, be so brave and share their voices and to have you guys all, you know, listening intently and to implement the things that they, uh, wanted to change. And so it just felt like I was, it was really cool to see all of the things working together in that moment. Another cool thing that I did, um, was I was a student communicator intern with the Washington State Board of Education. This was a paid internship. So I did this, I applied, I think, a few months after I started with the Seala School Board. Um, but, and this is a different position than the one I originally applied for and didn't get. But this one played a lot more to my strengths. It was a communications-based and I'd done some dr- work in journalism and uh, other things like that. And so it was way more up my alley, I think, and I learned there every single day, the, like, the crazy things that they talk about at like the state level is just mind-blowing, but it was because of me asking questions and being so, um, well-versed in learning here, I think it made it so much easier to learn there. And then I also was able to form a really strong connection between all of these perspectives. I was like, I was a student and I was a student rep on a school board and I worked for the state board and so it was cool to see all those things work together and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Um, but oh, and then a little note about this is part of my position, I actually got to interview and select the students for the same position that I applied for and didn't get, uh, the few years before. So that was kind of a cool, like, circle back moment. I could just see myself sitting there in the interview spot on the Zoom, like, being so afraid and I was like, oh my gosh, what, it's crazy. Uh, perspective, this is, this is kind of the biggest thing for me, I think, is I was a student here. I went to school every single day. I ate school lunch. I went to English class. And then, um, I came here and I was a school board member and I listened to the policies and I learned about all the people and the programs that put my days at school together. And there's a lot that goes into putting your school day together and I never really realized that when I was just a student eating lunch. And then I also was a state employee and so in the education world, and so I was seeing all these really big programs and these big policies come down to here and be like medium policies. And then in school, they were small policies, kind of, and so it was cool to see the trickle-down and all those things work together. And then also I think at the state especially, they're really disconnected from that ground floor of students in everyday life. And so it was cool to be a little bit of like the connection between those things and even here too, I think. Um, we are the connection between on the ground and being in school and so I think that's been a really cool role for me to be that link. Okay, if you take one thing from this whole presentation, I hope it's this slide. Uh, this is the big reflection. I'll share my highs, my lows and my gratitude. So highs, I think, sharing my voice. This really gave me such a cool platform to share what I think and to explore what I think. And I've also got to meet some really wonderful people from all corners of the community. Students, community members, you guys, teachers. Yeah, it's been really cool. And then lows, I think I definitely overbooked myself, especially this year. Um, so I wish I could have participated a bit more, but I really truly loved everything that I did this year and so I don't think I would change it. I wish that I could spend more time everywhere. Um, and then I wish that I kind of connected my activities more. I, uh, spent some time or I was a, I worked for the Acma Herald and I wish that I could have connected this and that. I think that would have been a really interesting partnership there. And then I wish that I'd reached out to a little bit more of the community. I see, I feel like I'm proud of the job that I did doing that. I was happy with the people that I met and the things that I learned, but obviously there can always be more community involvement, so. And then lastly, gratitude. They're not here, but I want to say thank you to the other student reps. It's, um, I rem- like I was sitting there, I felt like I was experiencing something with other people, like we had the exact same probably nervousness in that moment, sitting there at the first meeting and we, we all had the same feelings and um, even with these newcomers, I think it's been lovely to share this time with them and to, you know, all be kids, but also get to see this next level. That's very cool. And then thank you to you guys. You've taught me a lot more than just about policy, about sharing my voice and, um, being good pillars of the community and I really, I can't express in words how thankful I am and how much you've taught me, so. And then lastly, our district staff and our school staff, I think. Um, I am the person that I am because I went to Seala School District and people, um, supported me and yeah, I just, I would not be the same human. I would not be here without all of them, so. Okay, what is next for me? Um, next year, I am actually in a month. I'm moving to Canada, moving to Vancouver for VC and I'm going to go to the University of British Columbia and, uh, I'm doing their Bachelor of International Economics program. And that's a small cohort-based program of about a hundred students per year. And international economics, it's, it's kind of a specific field of study, but there are a lot of an interesting career pathways that can stem out of that. And I was really excited about having, um, some freedom there to choose and explore what I wanted to do and not feeling confined to one major or one job. Uh, and then also helping others is a big thing for me. That sounds pretty general, but I'd love to do like human rights work and just help people explore their voices and how to share those voices and that's a big thing that I've learned here and in my role and so. Yeah. And then lastly, very last slide, I promise, um, is just one last thank you. Um, thank you for giving me a space to grow and to ask a lot of questions and to feel like I was making change. I will always be thankful for you and I feel very proud to say that I was part of Seala School District, both as a student and as a rep on the board, so thank you very much.
Are, are there any questions or comments from the board members?
Indy, it's been a pleasure really to work with you for the last couple of years. And irony part of that is you, uh, you said that we gave you a little bit extra confidence coming into your junior year. This was kind of a breath of fresh air for us. We've been going through some stuff at the school board level too and to hear someone that is, uh, uh, accomplished as much as you with the work ethic and stuff, it means a lot and kind of puts in perspective why we're doing what we're doing, so thank you.
Thank you. Indy, we're really gonna miss you. I have appreciated having you on the board the last couple of years. Personally have known you since you showed the picture at fifth grade at the zoo and I was there. And I remember mileage club, you know, to see all these kids grow up and fly the nest, so it's, it's really special and I'm glad that you got to spend some time here and that we got to enjoy.
Thank you.
Uh, Indy, I wrote down my highlights. Uh, the report your junior year was one of them. You mentioned that as well. Um, the hosting of the panel at Seala High School, you mentioned as well, was still one of my highlights of, of my entire time on the board. Um, uh, the opening, I think you were a speaker at the opening for our school year this year at the VPAC and you came across, as you did tonight, as poised and as polished as any student that I've ever seen. Uh, and then my other, uh, highlight is on Jeff Hartwick's last night, uh, in the chair that I'm in now as a school board president, uh, I came over and whispered to you, this is Jeff's final night and you went, oh my God, what? And I said, yes, and you said, okay, uh, I'll, I'll say something and you came up with on the spot the most beautiful heartfelt sincere comments to him and it just, that, that's a kind of level of a student, uh, that that's hard to get to, which is that you can respond in the moment. Uh, it means that it's true to you, uh, and so I appreciate all those things about you. We're very proud of you as a, as a school board. Your perspective just shines, uh, uh, and your wisdom does as well, so. Uh, thank you very much and good luck on the next leg of your journey.
Thank you.
Any, any other comments?
That you please come back next year, hop in, check in with us.
I will, I will for sure.
Great job, Indy. Let's give Indy one more round of applause.
Thank you, Dan.
Woo, okay, I think we're done. No, we have more, we have more. Uh, next up, in fact, are a couple of other district highlights. Uh, we've had a really great month in, uh, July for um, some statewide recognition for some of our students and Superintendent McKay has some notes on, uh, on that for us.
Yeah, our first one, um, is about our entire high school. Our high school is, has been recognized as a Washington School on the Rise Award winner. They are one of eight high schools in the entire state of Washington who have received this award. Uh, the recognition criteria for this award is they've established systems demonstrating students and adults collaborating and leading school culture together. Tangibles of examples of co-design, collaboration and joint leadership. Examples of authentic student engagement and of that elevated student voice, Indy has mentioned that as well. Um, uh, examples of schools engaging in multiple student voices and perspectives and quantitative and or qualitative data to illustrate the outcomes of student-adult joint leadership. So congratulations to the students of the high school as well as the staff and the administration there. Uh, pretty, pretty incredible award. There's no monetary value or anything, just notoriety and know that we're one of eight high schools. There it does include some elementary schools and middle schools as well. That came earlier in the month and just recently we were made aware by the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction that we have the one and only student named as the migrant student of the year for the entire state of Washington. This award is given to one student. Our student is a Bundillo Camarillo Mendoza. Uh, and he was recognized as the student of the year for the, all migrant students in the state of Washington. Because of this award, he also, uh, is going to be receiving a thousand-dollar scholarship from the CMR Community Health Center. Uh, he will be recognized for his award, uh, in Yakima on Thursday, August fifteenth for the state migrant, uh, convention. That is not it. We also had another student, another one of our migrant students receive is the recipient of the Power of Community Perseverance Award. And this is Margarita Vaca-Guavara and she was a recipient of this award. Uh, this award is, is basically what you're doing within your community to support, uh, your height, your schools. And a pretty prestigious award as well and she'll also be recognized, uh, in Yakima on the fifteenth at the state awards. So great month for our students, those two students as well as our entire high school.
Excellent, thank you very much. Appreciate that good news coming here in the summer for us. Uh, we now are in the, uh, part of the agenda where there is, uh, the ability for the public to make comment. Um, so we invite all community members to address the board on an issue or topic. The agenda item titled suggestion comments from the audiences for any comments related to topics that are not on the agenda. The audience can also provide additional, or excuse me, informal comments on specific agenda items after being recognized by the board president. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Patrons making comments are asked to begin by identifying themselves. Um, uh, while the board will listen to all public comments carefully, the board cannot respond to comments spontaneously or without further deliberation. The board may direct the superintendent to respond to the issues expressed at a later date. Complaints about specific personnel will not be heard in open session and will not be part of the record of any public meeting. Harassing or derogatory statements about any persons or groups of persons will not be heard. Is there anyone that is here to make a public comment? Okay, I think we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the board meeting minutes from the, uh, June twenty-seventh meeting. And they're fairly extensive. I think we said they were seventeen pages or something, Jennifer, is that right? Um, added to those minutes are, uh, some of the, um, comments submitted, um, uh, prior to the meeting, uh, regarding the, um, well, just public comments, I guess, regarding a number of things. All right, um, uh, I will move that we approve the meeting minutes from the June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four meeting. For a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, any comments or questions?
I, I just want to thank Jennifer for the great note-keeping that she took at that meeting.
Excellent, thank you for that point. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of approving the minute, minutes, uh, the board minutes signify with a yes?
Yes.
All opposed with a no? All right, the meeting minutes have been approved. We are now on to the consent agenda and I, I, I think, I like the kind of precedent we set last meeting, which was that we cover all of the consent agenda items as one item. Um, which is kind of why they're all lumped together like this. This month's consent agenda includes a human resource action sheet, information on payroll, goods and services, some policy updates on digital citizenship, media literacy, P E and health class, recess and physical activity, nutrition, electronic resources and internet safety and wellness. There's an overnight travel request and a donation. I believe the donation was Seala Middle School Boys and Girls Wrestling donation was made. Um, would anyone like to move that we approve the consent agenda?
For future, if we're uh, approving the consent agenda as one, are we just acknowledging that we're getting first readings of these? Cause we don't want to acknowledge, we're not trying to pass these yet. We're just acknowledging that we've received them in first reading. Would that be correct? Okay.
Great. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda items? Oh, excuse me, I'll make a motion that we uh, approve the consent agenda. Any comments or questions on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify with a yes? Yes? All those opposed with a no? All right, excellent. And we are now on to the item six, which is the budget public hearing. And I think uh, I need to open the hearing, uh, officially open the hearing. This is a yearly uh, event that happens in um, July. Uh, and it's due at the, I think the end of August. Um, and traditionally we have approved the, the budget at the end of July. Last year was a bit of an outlier, but um, uh, Chris, do you want to take it from there, please?
Slides, um, just to note, uh, for the audience, we have forty-five slides. Um, we're not intending to speak to every slide. A, a lot of the slides are information only. I know you guys really want us to speak to all forty-five slides. Uh, but a lot of pie charts and, and different things in the presentation that um, everyone will have an opportunity to spend more time with. If, I know the board's had it for a while, but this will all be posted on our website as well. So we'll, we'll focus on some key slides here. Um, as a reminder, as I'm getting down to probably the first one, well, first I'll mention, as you all know, um, the development of the budget, um, the mission, the vision, our core priorities are, all those things come into play in the conversations that we have on a daily basis here in Seala. And the conversations that we have throughout the budget development processes are always, I know Kevin asks uh, often, okay, what impact does this have to the classroom? You know, those types of questions so that we keep that at the forefront. I also want to just say, this last year, we've spent, we started right out of the gate in September developing the scope and timeline for this budget analysis project. We heard the board in August say, Kevin and Chris, you need to get your team on board and work on bringing expenditures in line with revenues and make progress on that. And we took that very seriously. Uh, we worked with our cabinet. Thanks to Chad for being here. Um, Alicia Jacob at the time, Betty Lopez and Kevin and I, we worked tirelessly, tirelessly on this job, on this project. And we just appreciated the collaborative process that we've had with other admin, with staff, with stakeholders, as we've uh, reviewed all of the departments and programs in the district throughout this process. And I, I, in my twenty-four years here, I feel probably this is the most thorough budget development process we've ever had. And I'm not gonna lie, I was very nervous getting the draft budget out of the system. It's always just a nerve-wracking thing because you don't know where you're gonna land in the beginning. But we were very pleased. And um, when we went through it in detail with Kevin, he was very pleased, if I could speak for you. Because uh, we worked hard, we made progress and we see, we see the light. We see, we, we see what work is ahead of us without knowing what's going to happen at the legislative level. And we feel very confident about this budget and bringing it to the board tonight. So I just wanted to mention that. I'm gonna go down to where we typically start our presentation. A lot of these entry slides are reminders about, as I mentioned, the development process and those core things that we keep in mind when we're putting the budget together. Um, the Viking promise being probably the most key component that we talk about um, in thinking about how we're funneling our resources. And that is really to focus on meeting the, the needs of the whole child by creating an equity-centered, engaging and personalized learning experience in an emotionally and physically safe environment for each child. That comes up, all different components of this come up all the time in our conversations. And it's, it's just been really uh, pretty cool. Uh, the depth of conversations that we have in thinking about this. And this is just the, the graphic of the Viking promise you can see there. And then um, we've included the demographics of our student body pretty much stays pretty similar, about half and half on male and female. Um, our uh, majority, uh, white population along with Hispanic uh, population as the majority. White being almost fifty-eight percent, Hispanic Latino, uh, thirty-eight percent, and then the other make up the difference. So, and that stays pretty consistent year to year. So as I mentioned with the budget um, in the past, uh, it's an instrument which really sets forth the annual financial plan. Um, for the achievement of the goals and objectives of the school district, the annual budget provides allocations of resources using district priorities as a filter, as I mentioned, and determine the spending plan. So really bottom line, it's a spending plan for the district for the following school year. Okay, so um, I mentioned a little bit about our budget priorities, but just as a reminder, safety, student safety is number one priority in the district, always has been. So that's always at the forefront in our conversations. Um, again, that we're keeping the Viking promise and our mission and vision in mind as we develop the budget. Uh, protect basic needs of educating the whole child and provide equitable distribution of resources that recognize the diverse needs of all of our students. Uh, priority in providing a personalized learning experience in an emotionally and physically safe environment. And allocation of resources to help ensure a focus on student engagement during the instructional day. And that became very uh, important as we came out of COVID too, to transition back to the classroom. Um, obviously we are um, determined to meet uh, legal compliance and educational standards and then maintain fiscal responsibility and stability over time. And that's really what we're working hard on right now is to get to a point where we feel that we can be sustainable and fiscally responsible moving forward. All right.
All right. So this gives you kind of an overview of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget by operating funds. So as a district, we do have multiple operating funds that each house a certain component of how we operate business. General fund is our primary fund. Um, that's where majority of our activity takes place. That's our day-to-day stuff. Um, if you take a look, we budget, uh, we expect to receive about sixty-six million dollars in revenue next year with a budgeted expenditure of sixty-seven point five million. Um, of course, that's going to put us in a deficit. You'll see right there of one point three million dollars. And we'll, we'll spend most of this presentation diving into that, what makes up that number, how we got there. Um, one other thing I'll note on general fund too, is the transfers in and out. You'll see there's a zero there. Um, this year and I think the past couple of years, at least another year. Um, we haven't transferred any of our um, funds from our general fund into capital projects. We had done that for, I guess, twenty forever, ever since Chris has been here. We've used, um, we've transferred a chunk of money into our capital projects to fund those building repairs, those big um, like HVAC or roof or um, just to maintain our facilities there. So, we didn't budget anything there, again, this year as part of our budget reduction process.
And as a reminder, we haven't, now that we have newer schools, our need for additional funding isn't as high. So we do have a small cushion in there if we need to have safety improvements and that kind of thing. But we don't, we're not in need of transferring funds at this time.
All right. And so general fund, we have a projected ending fund balance of about eight point nine million dollars there. For ASB, that's our Associated Student Body Fund. This is the fund that we operate all of our student clubs and activities, those extracurriculars. Um, some of the ASB portion of our athletics goes through there. Um, you'll see that we also have a deficit projected there of about seventy thousand dollars. Um, this fund is a little unique because we, the students will fundraise, um, but we expect that those students who are fundraising get to spend those dollars as they go through the system. So, we don't want this to grow a huge fund balance. We hope that it'll eventually go, it's a little high right now, but hopefully they'll start spending those dollars down um, as those students go through the system. Or through our schools. And debt service fund, that's where we service our debt. So we have our tax revenue coming in about four million dollars. And then our bond payments, bond and interest payments, principal and interest. Um, with a net deficit as well as a hundred, hundred and thirty-four thousand. And again, this fund, we don't want to build up that fund balance in here. Uh, we want to have enough revenue coming in to cover our payments, but uh, if we get to where we're building that fund balance higher and higher, it's an actually reviewed by our auditor. So it'd be an audit issue if we're banking a whole bunch of money in that fund. Capital projects fund, this is where we um, run all the activity for those capital improvements to our buildings, new construction. Um, there's not a whole lot of activity in here this year, and Chris will speak to this later too. Um, but overall, our fund balance will be about six point eight million at the end of the next year. Um, chunk of that will be remaining um, state match money from the prior construction projects. Um, but big chunk is the Volbarette donation that we've set aside for the future tech center, whatever that will look like in the future. And then um, just some non-bond money sitting in there from those transfers that I just talked about, the general fund.
Yeah, I'm gonna stop for a second and see if anyone has any questions on this big kind of overview slide.
I shouldn't have a question cause like my, I almost time to see this. But isn't debt service fund normally net like zero? How come there's a little bit of deficit on that this year?
It'll, it'll depend on tax collections that come in. And we also get interest revenue that comes in from the county treasurer, because all of these, each fund, the fund balance is sitting at the county treasurer earning interest. And so we get that interest back. Um, and then we use that to kind of project going forward each year. We'll, we'll set the um, what should we call it? The levy collection.
Yeah, the rate.
The rate. Um.
Not the rate, the amount.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so we can adjust how much we're gonna take in with that collection the next year to make those bond payments.
On the bond, we can change that.
Yeah, on the bond, but not the levies. You know, when, when voters pass a levy, they're passing in a set amount that we cannot collect over with the bonds. Um, it's, the assumption is made that the district's going to collect enough to pay the principal and interest payments on the bond. So if you'll remember, our first debt payment's always December first. So we don't, we won't have all of our tax collections enough to pay our principal and interest payments. So that's why we want to hover around this one point three to one point five, depending on what the principal and interest payments are, so that we can pay those in the December, um, December one, at December one, and then we pay our second payment June one. So um, we have to have enough money in there to cover those, the debt service on that. And it is a, an audit issue if that's building up, because then we're taxing our patrons more than what we need to pay the debt.
Yeah, so, so that answered one of my questions. Um, so that number, the ending fund balance, we're comfortable with that. And that's sufficient to cover our debt in December. And I guess the other question I had, which is probably moot at this point, is can we pay additional principal towards our debt? Like if we have extra money. I know that's not it.
I don't think anybody does that, but I think it's allowable. But the problem is you would have to go out and collect more from your taxpayers to do that. And actually, now that I say that, I don't think it's legal because we can only collect what it takes to pay the debt.
Well, Eric wasn't here yet when we did the refinancing, it's called refund.
Yeah, refunding.
The process that we went through at the W L D right before you came.
Yeah. So, and we also have with the debt service fund in particular, we have um, our uh, financial advisors look at it. We have two different companies that look at it and give us their opinion as well. I just like the second set of eyes and they work in that world all the time. So you just want to make sure we're, we're solid on the numbers.
All right. And then the last fund there is our transportation vehicle fund. That's where we replace and purchase all of our new buses. We get depreciation funding from the state as those buses age through our system. Um, and then we use that to purchase new buses. So we got about three hundred and thirty-five thousand left at the end of next year with our planned bus, bus purchases. I know we're waiting on a couple right now.
Well, if two come in, the end will should be any day now. And then we ordered two more that hopefully will come in next year, maybe the following year, because these we've been waiting on for two years. So.
A little slow. Any questions before we move on? All right. So diving into general fund, some budget highlights, uh, revenues and expenditures with the budget reduction prog- um, project process, our goal was to bring our expenditures in line with revenues. So what we're looking at this year going forward is we wanted to make sure our revenues are increasing at a higher rate than our expenditures or vice versa. Expenditures aren't increasing as the same as the revenues. Um, you'll see that revenues have increased three point three percent going into next year. And expenditure is just the one point six five. So we, with those budget reductions we've made, we've slowed that um, projected increase in those expenditures, which is a good thing. Um, what we're looking for. And that resulted in that um, reduction in our cash reserve of one point three million dollars. And we'll talk about that number here in just a little bit. Um, projected cash reserve at the end of next year is eight point nine million. So it's about thirteen percent of our fund balance. Um, our budgeted expenditures, which you guys as the board had set the policy at eight percent. So we are meeting that eight percent and plus about five percent above that. Staffing levels, certificated staffing, we made cuts there of about eight point zero F T E. And classified, we actually had an increase of two point O F T E. And we'll talk more on that as well with the budget reductions. We do have some um, pluses and minuses, we'll get into more detail in. And then enrollment projection, thirty-six, forty-two is what we projected. That's a little lower than where we ended last year. Um, just because we had those cohort, that cohort, um, pretty large group that left our system and some small pockets of students and some other grade level.
Any questions on that? Okay, this slide, you're gonna look at it and say, wow, first of all, you probably can't read it. Second of all, it um, is a slide that was very important to, to us as we went through the draft budget because we had some themes in our budget reduction uh, plan that we wanted to try to accomplish some different uh, goals. And one of the key things that we wanted to do is to make some reductions in our basic ed, staffing, our A L E staffing, alternative learning experience, which we've made one, okay, and S R funds and levy funds. So a big uh, theme for us that we wanted to work on was reallocation of resources so that we um, can, could better actually fund our staffing um, and make reductions in non-staffing costs where we could, which we did. We made uh, professional development and travel uh, reductions in our categorical programs. We shifted those resources to be able to fund more staff so that we could uh, better support our students from that standpoint. So we uh, achieved our reductions in the programs I mentioned. Um, you'll see also the E cap, which is our uh, preschool program. Um, we shifted from a certificated model to a classified model. So we have classified lead teachers now to help fully fund the program and better fund the program. So we um, we reduced three uh, certificated staff there and we increased by three classified. The dollar savings there was pretty substantial. So um, that was one thing. And like I said, levies, we, we were able to accomplish reductions in levies, reallocation of resources. Sometimes we shifted from levy to basic ed and then from basic ed to categorical, so that in the end, we were able to cut eight certificated positions, including one administrative position. And then on classified, so on, in particular, I'll use special education as an example. We have um, students coming into the district with additional needs. They either have uh, I E Ps with one-on-one pairs required. Or we needed to uh, restructure in some cases our certificated staffing for um, really high need students that were serving from Yakima Valley School at the high school. So bottom line, we needed to increase staffing on the certificated side and classified side for special ed. So um, in the end, although we accomplished a lot of our reductions in some programs, we, we, you'll see slight increases in those other programs. And, and they're listed by program there for, for every program. We, we, you'll see slight increases in those other programs, and, and they're listed by program there for, for every program. But overall, we felt really good about what we were able to accomplish there. We probably could have cut another five certificated staff, maybe some, an additional classified if we wouldn't have needed to increase in other programs. But that, you know, that's what happens in some cases. So that's, that fits into the overall scheme of things of the one point three million dollars. A big portion of that was the reduction in, in staffing. Any questions on that? Cause that's probably the most complex slide in the presentation.
I would just wanna make sure that we're clear that we, we didn't cut, we didn't, nobody.
Very important point, very important. We, from the beginning, we didn't have a plan to go into a full reduction in force. It's ugly, and you probably read a lot about other districts that have had to go through a reduction force. Our plan all along was to reduce through attrition, so, and that we accomplished that. We, we did reduce through attrition, nobody was let go, if you will, through a RIF process. So that was also a really good thing. All right.
All right, these are just a couple of quick slides on a visual on our staffing over the past few years. Certificated and classified staffing, you can see the kind of trend upwards in those ESR years, the twenty-one, twenty-two, especially certificated. You'll see that big bump. And classified, it continued through going into next year, cause we have those additional two FTE. But certificated, you'll see in twenty-four, twenty-five, take a dip to that two hundred and seventy-two FTE after that eight FTE cut. And then looking at it in terms of dollars, translating those FTE into dollars. Certificated staff and classified staff salaries, you'll see it's exponentially increasing over the past several years. With our cuts going into twenty-four, twenty-five, you'll see certificated salaries kind of level off. We had a slight increase, even though we cut eight staff with those salary increases from IPD. And people moving up the salary schedule, we still had a slight increase in total salaries paid out. And then classified staff, we had those additional two FTE that we're paying out. So it's about half a million dollars in increased salaries being paid for classified staff. With the IPD, yes. And then benefits, you'll see, again, it follows the same trend going up. But then next year, we're actually dipping down a little bit, so we're paying a little less in benefits. One, because we have fewer staff, and then also because the benefit like retirement, the rate has gone down as well. And then key impacts that's driving that one point three percent reduction in fund balance. I mean, these aren't anything really new that we haven't talked about before. Big thing is that three point seven IPD factor that we get for our state funded programs, but don't for our federal programs. And therefore increasing the salary gap with that. Like Chris talked about, special education funding isn't sufficient. Next year, our special education programs are going to be running a seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar deficit. Which is higher than I've seen for us here ever, I think last year was about half a million, if I'm not mistaken. So with those additional staff, it's driving an overage in that program, that's pretty significant. Side note here, we are going to be applying for safety net funding to hopefully help offset some of that cost. It's a very, very in-depth process, and it's not guaranteed money. And if we do get additional funding for that, it's probably in the range of fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. So it's not gonna completely offset that overage, but hopefully help us out there a little bit for that additional cost for those students. And then the budget reduction process, like we've talked about, we cut about one point five million dollars in expenditures. If you remember last year, a projected twenty-four, twenty-five deficit was about two point eight million. So cutting that one point five in expenditures brings us to that one point three shortfall where we're at.
Okay, with this, we talked about the different budget reductions that we'd made, talked about staffing. We have our substitute costs mainly through the custodial and summer maintenance that we're. We've actually had a lot of those savings this current school year as well. Chris Harris has done a nice job with that. Curriculum adoption funding, we cut, we only retained our consumable budgets for that. Our professional development and travel, as I mentioned, technology reductions, device replacement and capital outlay, we've made reductions there. We fortunately during early ESR years, we were able to replace a lot of technology. So we're kind of ahead of schedule right now, and we're taking advantage of that. Material supplies and operating costs were cut across the board in every program to some degree, almost every program. And supplemental contract amounts mainly on the certificated side, we made some reductions there. Enrollment, so you can see here, and this is kind of a proud, proud moment for us here in Seela. Because we have so many other districts around us that are losing enrollment. As you can see there in twenty, twenty, twenty-one, during COVID, we lost pretty significant amount of students. And then immediately in the next year, we started recovering and fully recovered in twenty-two, twenty-three, stayed steady in twenty-three, twenty-four. And now we're projecting a slight decline for next year based on the cohort statistical method that we use to project enrollment. Got some higher classes in the upper grades and lower, lower numbers in the lower grades.
Yeah, the result of that is you're seeing the kindergarten, first grade, second grade classes are much smaller than the ones that are graduating. So you're not bringing in the same number of students that you're exiting. In turn, you've got to make some reductions overall, the entire, the entire enrollment projections in order to prepare yourself, which we think will continue to happen. The trend is that is a statewide, a regional trend, statewide trend and a national trend. With regards to birth rates in many cases.
Okay, the next slide is, just gives you a summary of what the projection is based on the different cohort methods. You can see the comparison there to twenty-three, twenty-four. So I'll go ahead and skip by that one. Go ahead.
So the kindergarten, first grade, secondary classes might be a bit smaller. Do we know, like, as a district, how many kindergarten, first grade, second grade age kids are here? And are we still getting the same percentage? Cause soon we never get a hundred percent of kids. I get ninety or ninety-five percent of kids other do homeschool or do.
Yeah.
Well, do, do we know if we're getting the same percentage that we've always had, or is that showing any?
I haven't actually.
I think there's some educated guesstimation on that. I don't think you can really get the true numbers.
Good question.
It, we do a comparison not only to what, what we're seeing as our enrollment here with those lower grade numbers. And specifically the kindergarten, and then kind of look around and see if it's kind of similar percentage wise. If we are seeing a, a greater percentage decrease in our kindergarten compared to maybe West Valley or East Valley. Then that would be maybe more, more reason to be concerned that maybe there's more students being homeschooled. Or more students going into private schools. But we're very similar in the same percentages that we're seeing in decline.
We'll go ahead and just leave this one for information on revenue and expenditure history, and Stephanie, do you wanna talk about?
So taking a look and see where our increases and decreases are. Revenues for next year, you can see that we're collecting about almost eight hundred thousand dollars more in revenues, revenues from local sources. And that's our levy money coming in, so we pass that levy at a higher rate, so we have additional funding coming in from the local sources. State general and state special, it's about two million dollars there, and that's our APD. So that's the three point seven percent that comes in from the state for that salary increase for those state programs. Federal specific, that negative five eighty-eight, that's our ESR funding. So we didn't get that, we don't have that going forward, so you'll see that decrease there in federal funding. And then other school districts and other entities, that's our special ed funding and our best, I think it's our best grant. ESC grant, so slight decreases there as well. And expenditures, you'll see certificated salaries increase that hundred and six thousand, kind of what we're talking about when we cut staffing. But we still have a slight increase due to the salary increases for our returning employees. And then classified staff, about half a million dollar increase for those additional staff. And the increases, the IPD increases for retaining staff. And then the, the two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar decrease in benefit costs for what we had talked about previously. Supplies and purchase services, through our budget reduction process, I mean, we made a lot of cuts in, in that and in travel. But you'll see that we do have increases in supplies and purchase services, and that's pretty much due to just the increase in, in operating. So we got our insurance premiums went up a hundred and sixty thousand dollars next year. And utilities went up another hundred thousand, so that's two hundred and sixty thousand dollars right there that have increased in expenditures. So we're seeing that across the board with a lot of those MSOC items there that we need to keep in order to operate. Travel, we reduced about forty-one thousand, so reducing travel. And then capital outlay, the three hundred and ninety-three thousand, that's for our food service walk-in freezer that we plan to put in this next year. With our carryover food service revenues.
Spend the food service revenue that we generate on food service, so that, that money can't be shifted somewhere else to cover.
Just so you know why we're looking at another refrigerator freezer. At John Campbell, is that John Campbell was designed with the idea of that we were gonna continue to, to have our current. Food service program, which was the free and or reduced program. We are now at a different level with our food service program of providing meals to all students. So with that being said, we, we didn't know that was coming when that building was designed. And although it had tremendous space and tremendous refrigeration and freezing space. We, we do need more to be able to capture and store as much of the products as we possibly can. That's what the plan is. When that actually happens, and when you're gonna see some evidence of that happening, that's a great question that I can't answer right now.
We have the space for that, we don't have to apply any.
We do have the space for it, and at a location that is. Is easily accessible for food service by, and by the ramp, and by loading dock, by utilities as well. So yeah, it's not by design, but it just happens to be that there's a space there.
And pretty much out of sight. It's a goal.
All right, so these next few slides are just some graphics and visuals of the revenues and expenditures, so we'll just kind of skip through that. Levy, this is the visual of our levy revenue coming in, so seven point six million dollars in levy in LEA. And how we spend those funds, so majority on teaching and learning, but also our co-curricular, extracurricular, safety and technology as well. And then just a reminder, those levy and LEA dollars can only be spent on enrichment activities. So anything outside the school day, professional development, extracurriculars for students, those kind of things. So we have to meet that requirement. Anything that's not funded through the state's basic education program. And then this slide's for our MSOC disclosure, this is something that we're required to have in our presentation since a couple of years ago. Just showing that what we're funded for through our, through the basic ed allocation for MSOCs, our material supplies and operating costs. So we're funded about four point seven through that model, and we're budgeted to spend about five point five million.
Okay, financial forecast, so you'll see in the presentation that we have provided a finance, for your financial forecast. And Jamie, I, I think in the last time we talked about this, you asked for a visual of what it would look like with projected cuts in it too. So we can see where that would bring likely bottom line. So this one, when we put together the financial forecast, we used our actual levy that has been passed. And the projected assessed values and so on and so forth, but the numbers are, are set. We've used that, we've also increased state revenues anywhere from two to three percent based on the source. And federal revenues, no increase, we don't expect any increase in federal revenues, in fact, who knows, we may see a decrease. Expenditures, we've used three percent across the boards, pretty typical number to use for your expenditures. However, our MSOC stuff is going up more than three percent, but that's what we use for the four-year forecast. So the top, this slide here just shows you the general categories of revenues and expenditures by year. But this part is the most important. So this slide shows you a four-year forecast without any projected reductions in future years. So you can see, if you look at the bottom line for twenty-three, twenty-four, we're projecting an ending fund balance. In this current school year at ten point two million. I just posted the apportionment for this month on my projection tool, and I, I think we're still in good shape with this number. Ten point two million brings us, we're about fifteen percent of expenditures. Which a reminder, your board policy requires a minimum of eight percent for fund balance. Twenty-four, twenty-five, looking at ending fund balance of just eight point nine million, which is right at thirteen percent. Twenty-five, twenty-six, looking at six point, six point seven million, which is about ten percent. And then four point nine million, and it goes, slides off quickly into twenty-seven, twenty-eight, down to three percent or two point two million. That's assuming no cuts moving past twenty-four, twenty-five. So if you go down further, and this slide just shows you in a, these two slides show you in a different way what the percentages are. It's all the same information. So you go to this next slide, so this does include cumulative reductions. So under the red numbers and yellow up above each year, you'll be, thank you. You'll, you can see the projected hit to the cash reserve. So twenty-four, twenty-five, you can see the one point three million. Twenty-five, twenty-six, we're looking at a, a hit to, projected hit to fund balance of one point nine million. Now, this is all with the assumption the legislature doesn't do anything. No change in the way that they're funding us, which hopefully we'll see some improvement next year, but you never know. So twenty-five, twenty-six, we're looking at one point nine million. We have decided that we are target right now for reductions for twenty-five, twenty-six. Without legislative changes is right, gonna be right around a million dollars. Moving forward to twenty-six, twenty-seven, we're assuming that we may have to cut an additional seven hundred thousand dollars. And in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, an additional three hundred thousand dollars. So those are cumulative cups, cuts, so you can see what the impact, projected impact to the bottom line would be. So basically, end of twenty-three, twenty-four, we'd be landing right at fifteen point three nine percent, thirteen percent in twenty-four, twenty-five. Eleven percent twenty-five, twenty-six, nine percent twenty-six, twenty-seven, and right at eight percent twenty-seven, twenty-eight. I hope the legislature does something before then. Special ed, I hope something gets done this next session, we don't know, we don't have a crystal ball. It needs to be fully funded, the whole way that they fund compensation has to be changed. It's not working, the gap keeps growing, every time an IPD increase goes through, it keeps growing for districts. Districts like Seela, we're fourteen thousand dollar gap in our teachers, what we're funded versus the average we pay. And it's every category, it's not just teachers, it's classified, it's administrative, it's a certificated teacher. So that's gotta change. But this shows you what we think the hit would be if no change at the legislative level and those, that level of reduction each year.
And the assumption is that in twenty-five, twenty-six, and going forward, the million, million, seven, two million cumulative reductions. Will come through a similar process that they came through this year, which is through attrition and through combing through everything. Have we, do we feel like we've, is attrition now the main driver? I know it was for this year, but found other places where we could move things around. Have we kind of maximized that so far, or is that gonna happen? Do you have to go through the same process?
We have to go through the same process, we need to. We need to, to take a step back and look at things again. I think that we can make additional moves, I hope, I mean, we tried to make as much as we could this year. Hopefully, if there's a change in the way that SPED's funded special ed, then maybe we can save some money there and help backfill. But really, remember, our budget's eighty-one percent people. So it, all of our conversations with our fiscal colleagues around us are all about cuts to staff. Staffing, eighty-one percent is people. So we're, we're always gonna hope to make our reductions through attrition. We never wanna have to, we, we have the board adopt our RIF resolutions every year because it's standard practice, and we have to by collective bargaining agreement. But we never wanna go into a full, a RIF, it takes years to recover from a RIF, we don't wanna go there.
In regards to that, so there's, there's positives and negative things associated with your staff mix. And your staff mixes is your experience level and your educational level of your staff. And in regards to retirement, i- if you have, which we have a very senior staff. Those people that are very senior, which are at the top of the pay scale in all categories, are more than likely going to retire at some point in time. If they're able to. And so there is a problem with that, if the year, with the year to year budgeting of it. But for those of us who are going to need to use attrition as a way to not have to riff people, then that is a savior that we do have a, a more experienced staff, although we're paying for that more experienced staff, they're more likely to retire as well and be able to use that as our method to be able to continue to save. But I, I want to be clear in that we just spent one year. It was only one year. This is not going to be a one-year fix. We didn't just put a big Band-Aid on this and call it good and and go about our business. We did one year's worth of work and we will continue to do the same work this coming year. And without, we follow the legislature, we lobby the legislature, we explain the challenges that we have with the legislature. But we can't count on them to bail us out. That would be irresponsible. And so we have to do the work just as we did this year. The work we did this year was very needed in our school district, very needed for a variety of different reasons, but it was a productive way of going about really getting a good inside look at the operational and funding of our, of how we fund certain things. And it was a way to get a really good understanding of how things were being done. And it gave us some insight of some areas that we felt could be adjusted. And you saw many of those adjustments in that really detailed and small slide of how we could change some practices that had been going on for a long period of time. And no fault of anybody's, we had the resources to be able to do it that way, but the resources are not that way. So my point is that we will continue to do this and we have to continue to plan that. We're going to need to get another million dollars out of our budget during the course of this year.
So just kind of look behind the curtain because you guys did a great job. We get into the numbers that we had talked about, so appreciate that. Does seem like the first year of something like that, there was a little bit of a rally towards it, you know, in regards to, I can't remember if it was Chris sending a quarterly or monthly mail or Kevin. And it does give you a chance, you know, this is a terrible term, but trim the fat and kind of get to where we should be. So then this next year seems like it almost take more energy because now we're, the fast probably pretty much trimmed and so now we're actually getting in the meat a little bit.
Yeah, good point, Jamie. I can remember clearly that the board, when Chris and I got, got our directive, which we fully needed and expected is that it was a two-part one. It was start to close the gap, but also do it in a manner that wasn't going to impact the classroom. And that was clear that we had to keep that lens about trying to not impact what's going on in the classroom. In, in year two, in year three, in year four, that's going to be more and more of a challenge to not impact the classroom. This year, I, I see very, we're going to feel very little, if any, impact to the classroom. But next year, that may not be the case and the following year is more than likely not going to be the case.
And as a reminder, and you all know this, our cash reserve is is pretty healthy. It has been and we've been able to plan accordingly to dip into that, to bring it down to that level that we feel comfortable with, that the board has set parameters around. And so that's really helped the process as well, where other districts don't have that luxury. Their cash reserves down to five percent and they're trying to make ends meet, so they don't have that cushion. So it's been kind of nice to have that as well. So let's go ahead and move on to this slide here. What are the ongoing challenges? We've, we've really talked about all of these, really just expenditures rising at a higher rate than revenues. We know that. The funding level for basic education compensation is lower than actual averages. M SOCs, so materials supply and operating costs going up at a rapid rate, much higher than we're funded for. So the change is needed and I've mentioned these, but the funding model for compensation needs to be modified. They need to recognize years of experience and schooling for certificated staff. They moved away from that staff mix factor, which is just nuts how they, they're doing it now, but that needs to be changed. We need to fix the way that they're allocate, the allocations that provide, are provided based on the different types of staff. They have made some effort with the PSES, the physical, social, emotional. You know what I mean? Those staff, they've made some progress there. Special ed and transportation need to be fully funded. We know that. And increased funding allocations for M SOCs. So, I mean, they're pretty straightforward, but there are big things to push and all of the state organizations are on the same platform with these. They're working together to come up with what's going to be pushed at the legislative level. All of us will take part in that in different ways. So we're looking forward, actually, I am too, we are to the legislative session, so we can be part of that.
I also don't want to give you any false hope though, because there is, our state is is, is at the ending of some, some pretty significant economic issues that many other states across the nation have faced. We're, we're kind of at the end, but we're starting to feel the impact of that. And, and I believe that the legislature knows they have some issues in K-12 education, but I'm not so sure they're going to have the ability to do anything with it with, without another source of revenue. And I don't believe that there's going to be a will to increase taxes significantly in, in the state. So we have, we have all kinds of different variables going on. I don't think one of them is that there's really many of the legislators, legislators that I speak to know that, that there needs to be some improvements. Their concern is, are we going to have the resources available to make those improvements?
Yeah, so that wraps it up for general fund. Onto ASB, just one item we wanted to mention about House Bill sixteen sixty. I think you're probably aware of it. We've talked about it before. This is the bill that requires us to waive extracurricular optional fees for those qualifying students from low-income households. So it's a great program. It eliminates that financial barrier for students. But it's also impacting our ASB clubs and athletics very significantly and creating a financial burden for those groups in fundraising. So you, we're seeing a lot more fundraising, so those groups can still provide those opportunities for students to go travel or go on these trips or just do their everyday club activities. But the district, we did set aside a chunk of our levy resources, levy funding to help offset some of that lost revenue for those clubs, but we're still seeing quite a significant impact from those fee waivers. And then debt service fund, and this is just a summary of the two outstanding bonds that we have. Our twenty eighteen bond, which will pay off in twenty forty-two, has a fund balance or a balance of thirty-eight million, three hundred and eighty thousand. And our twenty twenty-two bond payable in twenty thirty-six, that's the one that refunded in twenty twenty-two, has a balance of eighteen million, eight seventy-five.
Okay, cap projects, really quick overview on this. So our projected ending fund balancing cap projects is just under six point seven million, I mean, six point, little over six point eight million, of which at least three point seven million plus the interest accrued for this year for the Wilbur rep donation. So you have to back that out to get the net two point one to two point two million in non-bond funds in the the, the cap projects fund. So that's kind of a nice little cushion there. If we had something that we needed, when we need things to need to take care of things, we'll dip into that non-bond fund. We've also got a projected nine hundred and thirty-three thousand in state match money left over from our projects. We're just wrapping up the transportation cooperative. There's still a few bills hanging out on that. But we'll be able to, the board had adopted a resolution year before last to be able to use the leftover state match money for safety, projects related to safety. So as those come up, that'll be a revenue source for us. The capital projects fun or the actual projects that we've budgeted for for next year are mostly capacity related because all of our big projects are basically almost done, including our track, which looks wonderful and the stencil on the high jump area. If you haven't seen it, go check it out. We have some other miscellaneous projects in there that we're going to be assist importantly there. We are going to start our bathroom remodel and painting like we did at the high school, so we can keep our current buildings looking nice and functioning well for our students and staff. We also are going to paint the high school portables. And then basically just a few things left on the transportation facility, but really it's just more capacity than anything for cap projects.
Chris, an amount like the rep donation that we are probably clearly not going to spend for a couple of years.
At least.
Can we do something different with that money in regards to invest it and take advantage of some of it?
We're required to invest all money through the county treasurer. Yeah, we don't have a choice on that.
What color are we going to paint the portables?
Oh, good question. I don't know. I can find that out for you.
Just so they match.
Perfect. That's a good idea. All right, Steph, you want to wrap it up with the last two slides?
Yeah, so with the budget adoption, we do bring to you guys the proposed fee schedule for next year. You're not going to see really any increases here. Building fee schedules are staying the same. We're still operating this CEP for food service, so there's meals at no cost for all students. We are going to increase slightly the adult meal prices just to keep up with the cost of food and recoup that there. A management, just increase with minimum wage, certificated sub rates. We're keeping that the same at a hundred and ninety dollars a day. Really, that's still competitive with our neighbors around us. And early learning rates for our preschool tuition is going to stay the same at seven hundred dollars for full-time and four hundred dollars a month for halftime with the registration fee and late fee. And then this is just a recap of all the budget materials that will be on the website, hopefully tomorrow or early next week, including the citizens guide. We put that together again this year. Kind of a more Reader's Digest version of the budget that's a little more understandable along with their budget presentation materials. Go check it out.
And all of those will be posted Tuesday next week. All right.
Still in review, last year at this time, there was, I think all of us were, saw that two point eight or two point, yeah, two point eight million dollar deficit and going, whoa, that's a lot of money. And after the presentation, I can remember the board having some uneasiness about going through the adoption process at that time and directed Chris and I to go back and look for more and do a thorough more, a more study and give the board more time to understand and to, to grasp what was just presented to them. That was last year and then we got the directive and we did the work and the work was to close the gap. And I think you can see some evidence that the gap's been closed of a two point eight, one point five million has been closed in that. Obviously, that's not all of it. And we kind of knew that going in, it was going to be, it was going to be really, really difficult to close the whole thing. And we also agreed superintendent Chris and the board that, you know, that's why we have a reserve account is to to offset some of these difficult times. That was last year. This year is different and, and it's different in that we believe that we've kept you up to date throughout the process more than we would normally do. Multiple study sessions, board meeting presentations, communications from me about the process. And, and I'm, and I hope that all of that has paid off and worked, so you, you feel better about where we are. Not that you're comfortable in having a, a budget that's, you know, budgeted in the red, but at least you have the understanding of why and what's been done over the course of the year. With that, obviously, Chris and I and Steph would, would, would like the, the budget to be adopted tonight. That for us is a huge step of moving forward. But you are the board and this is one of your major responsibilities a- as, as a board to adopt a budget. The law allows us this month and next month to be able, for you to be able to have the opportunities to adopt a budget. If you are comfortable with it, my recommendation to you would be to adopt, to allow us to then move forward onto other things. But we also fully understand if you don't feel like it's appropriate to adopt at this meeting and, and to direct us to go back and, and look some more. We're, we're happy to do that and we, we expect that from you if that's what you choose to do. We believe we have gone through this so much that it would be difficult to find significance of more money to, to bring out of it. Part of that is eighty-some percent of our costs are already incurred with the contracts of employees. The schedules are built. We would be, we would be making decisions that would be reducing some of the capacity in certain areas and some of the, the funds that are available for things that we don't know but may happen and we want to be able to, to, to cover those. But if you again want to see more, then we fully can appreciate that and respect that. And we'll go back to the drawing board and do that and then bring you any of those revisions and changes for, to you in the August meeting. Secondly, if you feel like you need more time too with this, we tried to get you the information as early as possible. I know that many of you are waiting for this presentation because that's the best way to get it and to understand it. But that's another reason as to why you would, you would maybe move it down the line per se to August. Our recommendation and our hope would be that you would, you would adopt tonight so that we can move past this and get going on planning for the upcoming school year from a fiscal standpoint and from all the other reasons that, that are entailing and starting a new year.
Great, thank you, Kevin. As this is a kind of a formal public hearing, I'd like to open the floor now for public comment on the budgeting process. All right, seeing none, I will, oh, sorry. If you could speak there, then people online can hear you.
My name is Melissa Walker. I'm a community member. I'm also a staff member and I'm also the S E O P co-president. I just have one question on the budget. I just was curious on administrative cuts. I know that there's a lot of talk of classified, a lot of talk of certified. And in the certified is also administrative and their their pay is a lot higher to a teacher and a classified, a para, a bus driver, a food service staff member and a secretary. So when you talk about making cuts, where does that fall in? Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things that we wanted to stay true to through the whole process was reductions through attrition. And we didn't have any attrition happening with our administrative staff early on. We did have the opportunity with one of our highest level administrators leaving that we, Kevin reassigned and then we cut a higher level position, a director, certified director position. So that was significant savings. Those things, Melissa, are considered. We can, but most importantly, we look at where we're looking at program positions as far as what, where do we see the cuts can happen? Where do we see a position that can happen and other things can be absorbed? So we're looking at all positions, admin and across the board. I mean, we had lengthy conversations about admin across the district, honestly. And Kevin was asking us a lot of questions about that and we had a really good conversation because we wanted to see where we could make additional cuts with administrators. And until we had an attrition opportunity, we couldn't do much. But we do talk about all different classifications and yes, administrators are paid more. So that does make a larger impact, like the cut that we made at the district level. You know, a hundred and whatever thousand dollar position was eliminated. And the duties that fell under that position now are spread across all of us, I think, have a little bit, so.
So how does slide nineteen then kind of come to play on that? So we reduce staff by eight certified teachers and one admin. That would seem like a adequate ratio. If, if not be skewed towards more admin.
Yeah, when you look at the number of teachers that we have versus administrators.
Still not cut. I mean, it's through attrition, so
Yeah.
in this case here, but if we have to move down the road at cutting,
Yeah.
then that's something different. But for this year, the one that worked out, eight full-time teachers and one.
Seven.
Administrator.
Yeah, seven and one.
The admin falls as, oh, it includes one. I got you. Okay, okay.
Anything else on that?
My name is Mary Schuler and I actually am a grand, a guardian, but I actually have some children in the schools. There's some programs that are coming on this year and it actually already started. So it's a program that starts with kindergarten to twelfth grade. And it's the LGBTQ plus and it's just those kind of programs that's going to be pushed into the schools. And if the schools don't take that program and it's starting in August, that it's, that the funding is going to lose into the schools. So how's that going to affect the schools? that it's, that the funding is going to lose into the schools. So how's that going to affect the schools?
I don't, I'm not.
Do you know specifically to the, we're not familiar with what programs you're referring to. Do you know what? Could you be more specific with that?
I can get you the information and I can send it to you because it actually starts in August.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions?
I, I do have one question about the capital funds. Do we have enough? Because we had the track issue come up this year. And I know that I talked to you about this a little bit before, but we know that there are some HVAC issues and things like that that need to be done that are not necessarily on the repair schedule. Do we have enough money for that? I think that's probably my only concern with what I've seen in the budget.
Fortunately, the track issue was safety related. We couldn't hold meats. I mean, it's, the track was in a condition where we weren't going to be able to hold meats this next year. So that, that definitely is being paid for out of the cap projects. The HVAC upgrades, we should have enough in there. I mean, we wouldn't be able to replace like the whole HVAC system at the high school or something. That would be a lot more than we have. But we do have sufficient funds in there to be able to do some of those projects. Yeah.
And is there anything that you know of that is going to fail imminently? You know, like the track, we kind of knew for a couple of years, the track was in rough shape. And then it kind of seemed like an emergency this year. And so I'd like to avoid getting into that type, same type of situation. Especially where things are going to be so tight the next couple of years. Yeah.
Yeah, I would say the boiler at the high school is a concern area. I don't believe it's like it's going to fail right away, but it is a boiler. You never know. And it is older. I would say the roof at the high school is another one of those areas that has some concern. And I'm speaking on behalf of Frank here. My time with him is that he would identify those as concerned. Electrical capacity at the high school is at its max, certainly in the areas where we have more electrical needs. Most of that would be in the CTE program areas. So having the ability to be able to add things to that, it would be difficult because of electrical capacity. That's not going to just all of a sudden we, us not have it. It's just, we can't expand there. And, and then I, I do think the, the high school competition field for, for outdoor athletics is, is an area of concern. Those projects, I, I would, Frank was sitting here, he'd probably agree exactly with us. The other ones, it's just a matter of make sure that we maintain, maintain them appropriately and make sure that we're ahead of them on their current systems of maintenance so that we don't run into a problem later on at the other buildings. Again, as Chris mentioned, we're, we're very fortunate that our buildings are, are newer in most cases. So we can devote a lot of our, a lot of our attention and resources to the ones that are going to need it more. Sis for sure and the high school for sure. But I, yeah, if we were to have a system go down, we would have capacity to be able to get it back up and running again.
Okay, I will move that we approve the adoption of the twenty twenty-four budget. Let me make sure I get the, the resolution number here. That we approved the adoption of resolution number twenty-four twenty dash twelve. And we've already had some questions and comments from the board, but if there's a second, we can open up the conversation. Okay, any comments or questions from the board about the presentation or about the budget in addition to what we've heard already? Indeed, I, I want to make sure you're included. Do you have any questions or comments about the budget?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, good. I'll, I'll, I'll make, oh, sorry, Joe.
Sorry, I didn't mean to clear my throat too. Excuse me. I just want to comment. I don't know much about this stuff, just from what I've read in other districts. I can't imagine that anybody's working harder than you ladies in any other districts. And the work that you've done up until this point put us in a good position to weather this storm a little bit. So thank you on behalf of the community for all of your hard work and diligence.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that. Ten months of work, at least ten months worth of work of going through this very carefully, collaborating and communicating with stakeholders, bargaining units, administration, building administration. And to me, it's clear that strides are being made, that we can see that there's that one where it just starts to tip in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. That looks a lot better than the, the one without those cuts and it, I'm, I feel confident that this is a good budget to go forward with. Okay, any other comments or questions? All, all those in favor of the approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve signify with a yes? Yes? All those opposed with a no? Okay, so we passed the resolution twenty twenty-four twelve, the adoption of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Thank you very much for your work. Appreciate that. And at this point, we will close the budget hearing, the public portion of the budget hearing. Thank you. Okay, so we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the three resolutions, twenty-four eleven, twenty-four thirteen, twenty-four fourteen. These are, at least the first one is a standard resolution that we adopt every year for auditing officers. The next two are related to the transportation cooperative. Finally, complete acceptance is twenty-four thirteen and the building commission report is twenty-four fourteen. Do we do these as one or do we do these separately? Okay, any comments or questions about those administrative resolutions?
And, and Kevin, you're satisfied with the transportation facility?
Actually more than satisfied based on what we had to go through with value engineering, significant hundreds of thousands of dollars out of the project and worrying about what we were going to get at the end. Very satisfied with it. And I think the people who work there would, would say the same thing, overjoyed with it. Yes, it will be a, it will be a facility that will be able to last, in my opinion, fifty or sixty or seventy more years. Oh, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Would someone like to move that we adopt resolutions twenty-four eleven through twenty-four fourteen?
I'll move, we adopt resolutions twenty-four, twenty twenty-four eleven, twenty twenty-four thirteen, twenty twenty-four fourteen.
I'll second.
Great. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of adopting the resolution signify with a yes? Yes? Opposed with a no? All right, the resolutions pass five zero. We move on to the associate superintendent for district operations. Financial status update for June twenty twenty-four. A financial status update, my God.
All right, our reports are not, our reports are going to be fairly quick and we'll start with Steph.
All right, so financial status update for June, eighty-three percent of the way through the school year. So we got two months left as of this report. We received about seventy-eight percent of our revenues and seventy-eight percent of our expenditures. So a pretty balanced there with a ending fund balance of nine point one, almost nine point two million dollars. And the revenue is coming in in July and August. You'll see, because in, in the budget, we noted that ten point two ending fund balance for this year. You'll see that fund balance probably creep up to that figure because the July and August apportionment percentages are, I think, twelve percent. So they're the highest two months that we receive. So you'll see that trickle up on that higher side there. And then on the second page, just one thing to note on debt service fund, we did have our second debt payment of the year in June. But you'll see that come through on the expenditure side, leaving us with one point four million on debt service.
Great, thank you.
All right, couple other, one quick one here with state patrol inspections. Back in June, we received our official letter from OSPI thanking us for exceptional results on our inspections by the state patrol for our maintaining our buses and our motor pool vehicles. So I'd like to give a shout out to our mechanic Steve and, and Clayton, both of those guys and, and Joe and the department. They've just continued to do a great job with those. The other thing I wanted to talk about just briefly was we finally had the auditors finally wrapped up our audit. The last component, we've, I've already talked about the federal and financial audit reports in a previous meeting. I think it was March. This one is the accountability audit report. Overall, that went very well. They audited the last three years through August thirty-one, twenty-three. They covered normally what they do in the accountability audit. They look at high risk areas, potential risk of theft or loss. And so they went in depth on that. They also look at ASB on fundraisers. Although we had a few recommendations on the ASB fundraiser side of things and our student store at the high school, we'll be setting up some additional trainings on that and we'll get that stuff cleaned up. There's always a few exit items and management letter items in any audit because there's, you know, there's time that goes by between the audits and Stephanie and I are going to get out a little bit more to do some internal audits on those things. But overall, things looked really good. We are pleased with the results. Again, we have some things to clean up, but we'll get there. For a three-year audit, it ended pretty well. Starting next accountability audit will be on a two-year cycle. I've requested that because it's a lot easier to, to keep things in, in fact and easy to find and easy to remember. You know, I'm getting older now. So I like the two-year span versus the three years for on the accountability. And these reports are in the onboard docs for you too. Any questions on that? Okay.
Thank you very much. We move on to item nine, superintendent report. Mr. McKay, do you have a report this?
There is no report from me this month.
Thank you very much. Item ten is board communications. Are there any communications from the board of directors this month?
Good luck in Canada.
How does that work? Indeed, you have to like, you just go up and go to school? You don't have to be like a citizen or anything?
I have.
It is super hard to become a Canadian citizen.
Yeah, I have to get like a special permit. It's called a study permit. And it's actually been kind, I'm, it's challenging. I'm having a challenging time. But it's okay. I think it's going to work out. So I don't have to get like a official visa and it is easier for US citizens, which is good, but the waiting process is really long. And so that's been kind of a challenge, but I, I think it'll work out. It would be kind of bad if I just couldn't get into the country, but I think I can, so it'll be okay.
That's great. Well, congratulations, Andy. We will really miss you for sure. So please, please come back and let us know how it's going.
Thank you, guys. It's been a pleasure.
All right, at this time, the board will enter a closed session as is allowable by RCW forty-two thirty-one forty. The board of directors is closing this meeting to the public for the purpose of collective bargaining session, grievance meeting, interpreting, application of a labor agreement, which is part of subsection four A. I anticipate the meeting will take about thirty minutes. Is that all right? Does that give it a stop time? Fifteen seems like too little. All right. So thirty minutes would be our anticipated meeting and it's now six thirteen, so we should return back at six forty-three, let's say. Okay. All right. And with that, we'll, what do I do? Do I gavel us out for? We'll just move across the hall for the closed session and move back over here to.